Before we get started, I want to mention that this is our first live broadcast of a council meeting tonight, and to be aware that since we are live streaming, mind all the attendees, to be courteous and keep the background noise to a minimum. However, we are excited to welcome ourselves into the new world. So with that being said, we'll get going. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Mordini?
Here.
Sergeant?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Orak?
Here. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I'd take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Next item is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any item at this time? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item five. Item five is a consent agenda. I know I've had Councilman Mordini asked to pull item And Councilman Anderson asked to pull item 26. Having pulled those items, I would take a motion for the consent.
Motion approved. The consent is amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes. Motion carries. Consent agenda, item 11. Just need an individual motion for that, is that right? Need an individual motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, on these, I know there's been some sort of discussion over the years, and I am more than appreciative of everything that anybody that has to serve on committees do for the city. But before this begins with this translate, I think it's very important that anybody we ask to serve on these committees realizes that it's not a, the committee is not a place for you to insert new law based on your beliefs. That's my opinion that especially on a couple of these committees, that we need to make sure we're following what our code says and not what our opinion says. There's things as council that we all vote on that we may not agree with, but that's the way the city code is written, and that's what we follow. And quite honestly, if, I'd rather have a smaller committee than have people that are voting because of their opinion of what color street lights we have or something like that. And so I hope the people that are being appointed tonight realize that they're appreciative and also realize that I think there's very little tolerance for that going forward to cities.
And as we get down to new business, and we'll get into those when we get into the ordinances on absenteeism, I'm hoping that that's going to help with some of that. Go ahead.
I appreciate everything Councilman Mordini said, and I agree there's been discussion on that. I'm glad that he pulled this item so we can discuss it in the open again, but there are seven member commissions, not one person is deciding anything. And I just think it's important that we have diversified commissions and that everybody's allowed to speak their opinion, whether we agree with them or not. But I think it's good to get it out. So thank you.
I'll also follow that up too, that I did discuss with each of these people individually, their term and their term limits. So we have had these discussions. Anyway, I got a motion in a second. Roll call.
And I would add to Ron's point. I think the diversity of opinions is important. I hope we're maybe talking about two different groups inside here, but I would hope that they would act similarly when they're acting on behalf of the board and commenting even privately to that. Yeah, if anyone needs to vote a certain way to be on a board, but if they're acting differently while on the board and then commenting differently, that's where I do have a problem with that. So I hope that gets shored up with some of what we look forward to.
Anything else? Roll call.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Motion carries. Item 26. Item 26, consider motion to approve hiring Joel Hall, classified as part-time on-call employee at grade scale nine, step five or 2303 per hour. First off, I guess I'd take a motion in the second, and then we'll discuss it.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I just want to, I have no problem with this. I appreciate the work staff's done to get us here. It's just something I think is of change. I would like to see it stand alone so the discussions out there and the citizens with our modern technology get to hear why this happens to avoid any conflicts in the future. So if either you or the chief would explain why and how we got here, I'd appreciate it.
Is Chief here? I didn't see you there, sorry. Pay more attention to the camera.
Because I see the two.
Yeah, that's exactly why. And it's that camera there. Go ahead, Chief.
You want me to explain why we were hired?
Just kind of maybe a little background as to how we got here. And I know that we hired one other one five weeks ago now, or whatever it was, and.
Let me go back to what, back to the point where you hired me. I was hired as the interim chief of police to manage the department during the time that, during the period of time that the chief bars such retired and told the council to do a proper search and find a replacement chief. And because of my age, I'm not able to be certified as a police officer, which means I can't go up the street. I'm what they call an administrative chief. And that's in some ways a good thing, and in other ways that's a good thing. What I'm lying is, by the very nature of my appointment, it left the department one, realistically one officer short. So in order to maintain 24/7 coverage with the department, we've got to have a minimum of just a little over five officers. When I say a little over five officers, I'm talking about if you do a shift relief calculation, it tells you based on the amount of time that officers are given off here, anticipated leave time takes, let's just say around it off, it takes a minimum of five officers to maintain a 24/7 presence on the street. And so now that we're one short, there are two options to fill in for shortages in the schedule. And the first option is to have our other permanent officers work overtime. The second option is to bring in additional part-time officers that can fill in for the full-time officers. Now, looking down the road, the problem for me was that we can use regular officers on an overtime basis for a period of time, but in the long term, they get burnt out, and then you end up having excessive sick calls and other problems where you can't get them, you can't rely on them to fill in. So looking at the long term, I asked the council for approval to hire some additional part-time officers who would be able to come in and fill in basically whenever we can get them to, and give some relief to our permanent officers, and also give us some financial relief from the overtime expense. And so I believe with the last council meeting, the council approved the hiring of as many part-time officers as I needed to get a reserve force or reserve cadre of people on board. We don't get caught short in the event that we have an officer that's injured or sick or for some other reason gone. We have a possibility of losing an officer to another job we applied for. And so in order to stay ahead of the power curve, we need to get some reserve officers on board with us. So we did some recruiting, and based on our recruiting, we had two accident and three. These two, I'll go back, I think we already hired, or had approval to hire the other officer.
Yep.
This particular officer was the second officer that we can't take to hire. And the reason for that is to try and get us a reserve force available that we can rely on. Of course, comes the worst, when we lose an officer, and we suddenly have an unexpected opening.
Perfect. Any other questions? Yes?
No, I just comment. I believe this is the way to go. It's, I appreciate it. And I think it's also, and correct me if I'm wrong, that these guys are all qualified. They've been through the academy. We have officers that we don't have to retrain. Is that correct?
You're right. And one of the things that I, of the goals of hiring these additional people is to set standards that would allow us to hire veteran officers that have experience on the street, that have demonstrated track record. There's a certain liability associated with putting a young officer off the street that's inexperienced, particularly in our scenario where they work unsupervised much of the time. So I think it's important to have people out there who are a little bit more reliable, probably give us a little bit of relief from liability because they're experienced officers and because they're capable of working in an environment where they don't have to have direct supervision. So in order to attract these officers, or I should say, my goal has been to attract these officers. Now, we have had one applicant who doesn't meet these qualifications that I'd like to see. He's fully certified, and he could come to work for us, but he's a young officer. There's some problems with his performance, I know. So before I put somewhere like that out on the street and then have problems arise because of his performance, particularly problems that result in civil suits, I want to do everything I can to get these kinds of people on board with us. So far, two candidates that we have, including Mr. Hall, is one of, Mr. Hall has six years of prior experience with the Anken Police Department. And I've spoken with him, and he seems to be a very level-headed, very mature fellow. He's, well, he left law enforcement because he wanted to get into the family business. They've got a financial consulting company, a financial advisor company, and he wanted to get into that. Frankly, it pays quite a bit better to be a police officer, but he also has some interest and some dedication to law enforcement, so wants to stay in the law enforcement game. So he's, and he would be, I think, the very kind of guy that we'd want to see out on the street as opposed to a younger person that's not been inexperienced. We don't, we don't own much of, this guy's a known commodity. We know his track record, we know what he's capable of, we know what his performance history is. So and the other fellow that we hired also, Chris Klingon, also fits into that category.
I agree totally with the plan, and quite frankly, something that we were probably behind on. So commend you for trying to get us up to speed there.
Yeah, I agree. And but it's, thank you very much for putting that explanation out there. And I hope the citizens of Polk City understand what's happening and that we're not replacing our current force.
Take a roll call.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Before we move on back to the consent, just real quick on item 12, Colette, I want to make sure that we thank Colette Hiritz and Barb Otis for their term on the Arts Council. And both of them, just a change, and appreciated their time being spent when I talked to them. So I'll thank them for their time with what they did, and I know we're going to have some applicants moving forward. Next item is new business. Under new business action, item number one. Item number one, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-100, amending chapter 92, water rates, section 92.04, billing for water service. Number four, shut-off notices. Number five, handling of any dishonored payment, and section 92.05, service discontinued for fees. Mr. Mahana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one ordinance, one ordinance, ordinance makes several changes. Change number one, shut-off notices will be an automatic $15 that will be added on to the customer's utility bill. A dishonored payment, be it a canceled check, insufficient funds, whatever the situation may be, is now being changed to 25 to stay in line with the bank fees that come to us for presenting that. There is a new fee that is $75 that will be charged for the shut-off of water, and there will be a new fee of $150 for reinstatement after hours.
I'd just like to make a quick comment to that this, that this has been being discussed for quite some time. All these upcoming changes have been being discussed for quite some time, and I appreciate staff's work on getting them to this point. We've needed to address them, and we were well behind the power curve on where we were and as far as these fees go. So, yes.
I'd just like to add that this is, like you said, it's been thought about for a long time. There are still several warnings, several options. People get a chance to do this. This is, this will only be a last, last, last resort. We're not looking to shut anybody's water off. And we were going in the hole because we had people going out and shutting, turning water back on so people didn't have to go all night without water, correct?
Yep.
And hopefully, we can correct that now, and it won't inconvenience anyone, including the citizens.
Exactly. Take a motion on number one?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-200, amending chapter 69, parking regulations, section 69.11, winter parking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, this is commonly referred to as our snow ordinance. The, there's been some changes in this. Before, the ordinance read that you had to have an inch of snow or an inch of ice before you could go into plowing operations and have cars removed from the street. This now changes that to one inch accumulation and any accumulation of ice. It allows the streets to be clear for a 24-hour period from the end of a storm, and the rest of the, of the ordinance that is now in place would remain the same.
Yes.
The only question I have on that, just for clarification purposes, if somebody's, mostly they have two vehicles and one's on the street, and we have freezing rain at noon, and they're at work until five. In theory, could they get hung up on this even though it would be pretty hard for them to move the car out?
They could still get a ticket. The intent here is, if we get freezing rain, we get snows and that type of thing, councilmen, usually you have a good notification that this is coming. We're not out trying to add money to the coffers of the city. We just want people to be aware that it takes additional time for us to get around parked vehicles. And we create, especially when we're plowing snow, we create places where we're going to end up with blind spots, and somebody could get hurt.
I'm all for the idea of it, and I understand. I just want to make sure that there is, sometimes there's extenuating circumstances that nobody can see coming.
None of these are cast in stone.
Mike.
As the chief and I have discussed, it will be still an officer's discretion, so that's where that will come in.
I agree with, excuse me, I agree with what Rob's saying, and I know in the past, we have been very understanding. I've even had him knock on my door and say, hey, you got to get your car off the street. So been very understanding, and just all at once to go the other way, I think would be tough on citizens. So I hope we have a transition period.
I think we're just trying to clean it up a little bit.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think, you know, by the time these ordinances are passed, most of our winter is hopefully gone. So this will be out there, and really, the main focus will be on next year. There's going to be time to put it on publications to get it out. But we have gotten this information out in the previous years, and that information just doesn't seem to work quite as well.
Alan, maybe once we get down to the fee structure with that, that may fix some of this too. So I'll take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes. Item three, consider, uh, motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-300, amending chapter 70, traffic code enforcement procedures, section 70.03, parking violations alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, the fee for leaving your car parked on city streets during snow emergencies, snow removal operations is $15. This changes it to 45.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes. Item three, consider, uh, motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-400, amending chapter 135, street use and maintenance, section 135.13, fines for debris or dumping of snow onto a street or alley.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a new section. This places a fine for placing debris, be it grass, or dumping of snow on the city streets, at a fine of $25.
Make a motion to approve.
Discussion?
I was just putting back what Mike put in my driveway.
Roll call, please.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-500, amending chapter 22, planning and zoning commission, section, and of that, section 22.06, absenteeism. A little history on this one. In getting ready to get the appointments together for 2016, we were going through and reviewing the attendance from the various commissions and boards, and realized the only board that had an attendance policy to it was Parks Commission, that was a poorly-written policy at best. And anyway, I asked staff to come up with a new policy on absenteeism that would be basically across the board for all of the various boards and commissions, which is what we have before us on five through 10. This section that we're going to be changing, we didn't just write ourselves, we looked around and talked to other communities as far as what they were doing, and felt that this was a good option. I know I talked to the liaisons to both Parks and P&amp;Z, and they were both in favor of a policy when it comes to absenteeism. So that's a little history as far as where we're at. And really, all this is saying is, is that they're going to have an opportunity to miss two, have two unexcused absences, or three total absences. And we do have some people right now that don't meet that. So I think it's going to be good for all of them. Anyway, go ahead.
Can, after the two unexcused absences, let's say somebody's in the hospital, or they have something, do you have the right to excuse that if it's prearranged, that they call and let you know so that doesn't go against them?
It's with the concurrence of the mayor and council, good sufficient cause, yeah. Yeah. So I mean, we'd have to bring that forward, and, yeah.
That's for the two and three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The only question I have on this and all of these is the same. Are we setting a standard for our boards and commissions that we, as a council, can't meet?
The only difference here is that these guys meet, not all of them, obviously, but these guys meet only once a month. So, and some of them have, typically, most of them have at least one meeting that gets canceled a year, sometimes two. At least, that's what we had last year when we went back and reviewed it. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of looking at something for the council too, if that's what you want to do, but, okay, then we can't do that. So no, I don't think we are.
Black shoe, you're not intended to meet the way that they have to deal with that at the job. So, different procedures.
Well, we've been accused of a lot of things lately, and I don't want to have, holding higher standards for other people than ourselves to be one of them.
I would hope that we're not holding them higher standards than ourselves. That would be my opinion.
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Item six, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-600, amending chapter 23, Parks Commission, section 23.08, absenteeism.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
Item seven, motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-700, amending chapter 24, historic preservation commission, section 24.05, absenteeism. Motion?
Salute. Second.
Roll call.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-800, amending chapter 26, city tree board, section 26.05, absenteeism. Take a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
Devorak?
Yes.
Item nine, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-900, amending, amending chapter 27, arts council, section 27.07, absenteeism. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10, consider motion to approve ordinance number 2016-1000, amending chapter 21, library board of trustees, section 21.13, absenteeism. Take a motion? Roll call.
Devorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lane? No.
Motion carries, and I will ask that we place these on the next agenda with a consideration to waive the third.
I was just going to say, if we find ourselves not being able to get people to serve on these commissions and boards, we can go back and reconsider these, because there was a time when we had trouble filling seats up here, so.
Right now, I have a waiting list, so.
Well, good, well, good. But we want to guard against being in that position.
Item seven, mayor's report. Just a quick update. I think most of you know that John Calhoun will be retiring this, at the end of this year from PCDC. We did have our preliminary meeting on that, as far as what we're going to do moving forward, and I think there'll be some options coming forth in the next couple of months or some sort of a timeframe. But just to let you know that we are working on that, the PCDC executive board along with myself. That's really the main thing that's of importance right now. Councilman Lane?
Oh, thing I have mentioned a couple of times about the change allowing landfills that collect methane gas and convert it to electricity can start collecting yard waste. And since I serve on the Board of Metro Waste Authority, we've been trying to discuss this, and we've got a presentation put together that they're coming around to all of the city council that are part of the Metro Waste Authority, and doing this presentation. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, and see if there was a problem, if anybody was planning on not being able to attend the next meeting, I would have them come to give that presentation then.
Next council meeting?
Next council meeting.
I cannot attend the next.
Is this part of the meeting or work session ahead of time?
Yeah, they've been doing it as part of scheduled meetings. They've been just getting on, uh, the agendas to make presentations.
Watching the street.
That's true. Yeah, he can watch it later.
Okay. I just haven't got a hold of you. Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Anderson, to my right.
Thank you. Uh, I have some time on my hands now. I attended a staff meeting last week, was very informative. Uh, got to see kind of the inner workings of what happens before we get to a council session. Uh, although I think it's a good thing, I think there's probably room for improvement, but still I appreciate it be, being here and being allowed to sit in on those. Uh, also, all the department heads, I'd love to meet one-on-one with all of you at least once or twice a year and help be, become more informed about what's going on in the city. And having said that, I have some things I heard from, uh, staff and other people. As we move forward with this budget, I think it's important that we get a standard operating procedure in place for the budget and get it in writing. And I know the budget's been done very similar for the last two or three years, but I think we need to have a standard operating procedure in place for that with specific dates or this will be happening by then. Every, everything, just, uh, I don't know if we do that by resolution or how we do it, but I think that's important because the staff changes, elected officials change. I, I think it's important that we don't have a new procedure every time something like that happens.
Right.
So, something we should consider and I don't know how you want to proceed to get that in place, but I think we need to do that. Probably can't do it with this budget, but.
Maybe as we're doing it this time, you can just take notes, right? Just make a policy from what we do.
I can put some dates down and, you know, put some documents together for you, for your review.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Congratulations on retirement, by the way.
Thank you.
Councilman Mordini? Mr. Sargent?
Um, just a couple of things, uh, would echo Ron's comments. We just had a finance meeting and my first time with going budgeting process. I think that, uh, it's a very good idea to, to put some expectations out there so we can, uh, allow for time to feedback and make sure that we're not, uh, crunched with some of the timeline. I wasn't really aware of those coming in and got up to speed on those. So, I think it's, uh, it's fair to allow both sides, uh, clear and, uh, uh, direct communication to, into how that process goes. The other thing I was going to bring up, uh, that we've discussed previously is the, uh, with the opportunity on, uh, the resurfacing of, uh, Highway 414. We've had some meetings with various groups and Gary and I, uh, last week, I think met with, uh, week before, uh, met with, uh, representative from the Marina who was very much in favor of what we were trying to do, uh, which again was we've got some turning lanes added as you get into the city, but wanted to discuss, uh, turning lanes both into, uh, the Marina area and also into, um,
Sam Piper.
Sam Piper.
McBride.
McBride Drive, yeah. And, uh, which in my opinion, uh, are, uh, holds more potential for a, a, a bad accident and, and, uh, the gentleman from Marina was very much in favor. I don't know, I think we still have significant amount of hurdles to clear, um, with the DOT and some of those other groups, but, uh, I think it's worthwhile time and, uh, booed by his response and involvement, so. The other thing I was going to bring up, I don't know if it was timed by the mayor, but, uh, to have five resolutions on absenteeism directly proceeding, one of the first meetings, uh, council meetings that I have to miss, which is next week, but, uh, thank you for that, by the way.
You're welcome. Anything I can do?
I do, uh, will be gone, uh, next week. I apologize, but it was scheduled quite a while ago and I couldn't, so, that's all I have.
Mr. Devorak?
I just want to thank, uh, the, in our packet this week was the taxable validation, valuation, a single, you know, the single family commercial, um, fourplex, duplex, uh, numbers. I think that's great to see that we're not growing too fast as we, you know, it's really, it's really, we're growing, uh, the 6% last year. And I think when we talked about, you know, some, growing smart, not outgrowing our infrastructure and the services, right? It's, it's just, uh, it could really, it really, paints a really neat picture of how it continues to go up but not too quickly. And, uh, that's a, that's really a shout out to staff and the count, other council and, and everybody for help guiding that through and making sure that we don't, uh, upgrow our, uh, what we can provide to citizens or, so thank you all for that. And Gary, thanks for putting that together and whatever else helps. Really, I really liked it. And that would be it.
I'd, I'd just like to tag on to what, uh, Dave said. What's the word?
Uh, segue.
Thank you. And, uh, I'll tell you, I appreciate that work. I think it's important. I want to know, are we going to share it? We going to share it with other enti, entities within the surrounding area? Or is it something we want to keep to ourselves or what do we want to do with that?
Well, I have a couple of groups I'm speaking to in the next couple of weeks and I promise I'm going to share that information.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Council discussion? Uh, traffic report for Washington and Booth? Who's speaking on this one? Anybody?
I think I'm going to have Sergeant DeJors brief you on that. He's the one that did the survey, know them all about.
Yeah, as I understand, we had a, a commenter, a concern about the speed on, uh, Booth Street coming up and down. There's a new surfacing curves, uh, put there. Uh, I guess we offered, we talked to the city minister Gary Mahan about putting the speed trailer up there just to collect and capture that over weekend. Um, the initial plan was to do it over Thanksgiving weekend, uh, and when we had the snow and that stuff, we pushed it off. So, we were up there and we captured about three days worth of data, um, uh, both directions on Booth Street. And, um, if you have any specific questions about this, you can answer those. But as you can see by the data, it was like the, the tree, the street is used quite briefly. There's about 300, 350 cars that use that street every day, which was a little more than we probably expected. Looking at the, you know, staffing at the nursing home, using the convenience stores and that type of stuff, um, we can understand where the data comes from. Um, but if you look at it all in all, the speeds are between 16 and 30 miles an hour. Not, uh, an out used, outrageous for, um, a speed that's unacceptable. I don't think, we do have a few speeds that are higher than that. Um, you have to take into consideration there might have been a anomaly or something that triggered the speed trailer to put that speed in. So, that's, those numbers are a few in part between. So, all in all, the speeds are within, um, and looking at both charts here, 11 to about 30 miles is where the speeds are and that's not something that we write a, a citation for, 1.5 speed zone. You have any specific questions or anything that?
Well, I,
I can answer for you.
Excuse me.
No, you're.
That's, uh, I think significant traffic up there and we all know the reason, it's because of Parker. People using that as a cutoff for Parker. And I'm, I appreciate this study and what you've done. Um, but I think we don't need to let this go. I think we need to be cognizant, have people up there, have officers up there. And let's write some tickets. If we got somebody going 40 or 45, let's write some tickets up there.
We try to dedicate some time up there. Now, when you're talking with one or two cars coming through or a three-day period, it's, it's a long wait for, for one or two cars. But I think we can dedicate some time where we know where the speed zones are and people are coming and going. It's something we can look at.
Is that, are you using the speed trailer for that?
The speed trail, yeah.
Does that document the time so we can kind of see if there's a pattern?
Yeah, we can, we can break it down and it wouldn't, I mean, just jump on top either. Yeah, we can break it down into the times.
See if maybe it's the same person coming. I know that's a long shot of just trying to.
Sure, yeah.
Rear the window. It's the same guy late for work every day. What time are you going through there again? Check.
Yeah, we, we only captured about a three-day period of time and we'll capture this information, turn the speed. So, it was just plain signs sitting there. It wasn't projecting any speeds coming down hills and it, it shouldn't have interfered with, with the true data, with the people, so. And if you do look at it, it is what we expected. The traffic coming down the hill is much faster traffic like going up the hill, so. And that shows that on these graphs, so. But Ron, we can definitely take a look at the, break it down by hour and see what is the busiest time to try to get officer up. Um, we, I think we're, as a department, a little surprised that there was that much traffic over a three-day period.
I'm surprised.
It really is a problem.
Thank you.
As a general rule, are, are we using the, the data like this from other areas similarly to try and figure out where we need to be and where we need to watch?
We, we have, um, all the data reflects that, yeah. So, every, every study that we've done, we still have rest.
Yeah, I know one area that's been of concern for residents has been up in Turner McClub and we've been up there and monitored that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
City ministry report.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things to report. Uh, we now have three pumps running at the Barrier Dam, um, pump station there that's operated by the Corps of Engineers that takes the barrier water, uh, from the, uh, Big Creek side over to the, uh, Sabaville Reservoir. HomeServe is, um, getting calls already. Uh, there's been a mass mailing that's gone out. Uh, Jenny also placed on the, uh, the, Waterville, thank you, um, information on it. And that seems to, um, be going over well. Uh, we've had a few strange, um, calls on it, but, um, more than not, I think, uh, people are, are, have been expecting this. Uh, we have a, um, part of the website also will give you information on that. Recodification of the 2015, uh, ordinances has been already done. Jenny's probably been in contact with you about turning in your code books. Please remember to do such. Also, um, this new codes will be up on our, uh, website very shortly. With that, Mayor?
Perfect. Staff reports. Number one, attorney's report. Engineers report. Nobody's here. Public Works, report.
Nothing at this time.
Uh, Technology?
Two quick things. Um, as you guys know, the city's inaugural flash screen is on tonight. Um, I would like to thank Wolf Creek Technologies, David, Kyle and Cody Sweeney about their roles in this project. Uh, this would have been ready for today's meeting. Excited to see this resource grow for the city. Um, I also kind of want to expand on Gary's Home Serve update. At this time, we have, uh, multiple locations on the city's website, two Home Serve, uh, including the main page now on posts that we have up there, uh, on the navigation bar, under the four residents section, as well as under the utilities page, which I'd like to thank Jenny for. That's another good place for that, for advertising that. Um, it's also been rolled out on our social media and will be, continue to be published intermittently as a reminder.
Perfect. Finance?
Jake, will this be on reruns?
Syndicated?
Will this be on reruns?
Right after Mash.
Right after Mash? I'll be expecting my check in mail.
Thank you.
Finance. Fire Department?
Uh, the only thing I have is what's listed there are any, as far as the ceremony, Saturday, 10:00 a.m. You are killed. We have 14.
Swarat? Police Department?
Uh, you have, I believe, copies of the, uh, December statistical report and the year-end activity report. Uh, if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them. The one thing that I'd like to get call to your attention is the total number of, uh, contacts that the officers of your department had over the period of the year, which is on the second page there and amounts to 3,275 contacts. The remarkable thing about that is out of all of those contacts, uh, many of which involve adversarial relationships running traffic tickets, intervening in domestics, uh, fights, making arrests. Out of all of those contacts that they made, we had one minor complaint the entire year, which was resolved by an apology. And gentlemen, that's remarkable and that speaks very highly of the performance and the character of the officers you have here. I'm proud of it. That reflects an excellent job.
Appreciate it and I also appreciate this report and this updated report. It's much easier to read and I appreciate that a lot. Library? Citizen liaison? Ron, would you like to call attention to number 12?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.